Open the meeting, I have six, six oh four, six oh four, could we have a roll call please?
Catherine Patnold.
Here.
David Florio.
Yeah.
And Isabel Dos Reyes Kudo.
Here.
Donna Kalunian.
Yeah.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Coward.
Here.
And Harold Sands.
Here.
Thank you, so we can move to agenda number two, which is the celebration, and Mr. Levis will hand over the proceedings to him. Just get a mic. Move it around, yeah.
All right, here, apologize for my back. So, I try to pride myself on being a straightforward, honest individual, but occasionally, I falter, and tonight, I've kind of faltered because one of the things we talked about last year was, I thought it would be important for the superintendent to be able to give an award, recognize individuals in the community that have really gone above and beyond a lifetime of service and, but it's also from the superintendent, right? Because these individuals are also people that have been very important to me, and, and really helped me be the person I am today. And so tonight, I'm going to recognize four individuals, but one of them can't be here, so I'm going to keep that a surprise a little bit further, you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Ball. So tonight, I'm going to go in alphabetical order, but we're going to recognize Mr. John Ball, Mr. Jack Casey, and I know you thought you were here for Kelly, but why would I, why would I give Kelly an award? That's not going to happen, and then, then finally, Mrs. Kathy, Catherine Patnold. So, so anyway. And I'm not going to do a lot, I didn't do a lot of prep work, other than have pastry, coffee, and some pizza for afterwards, and it took everything in my power with, with Dawn's assistance to write something to put on flags, right? So, first, Mr. Ball, do you mind coming up? So I guess my format is, I'm going to read what's on the plaque, say a few words, and then give an opportunity for people, the school committee and people, to say a few words, and we're going to keep you down to 30 seconds. So I just want to read, and I'll read these, but this, this award recognizes John Ball for a lifetime of service and commitment to the Coventry Public School community. Thousands of students, families, and staff have experienced the impact of your contributions. Thank you for building a strong foundation that will allow future generations the opportunity to grow and succeed. We are forever grateful for the role you have played in developing the core values of Coventry Public Schools, not too shabby, huh?
Not just the way I wrote it.
Yes. And it says Craig Levis Superintendent's School, so I want to thank you. I was fortunate to meet Mr. Ball back in 2002, 2003. I started my administrative career, actually, it was my second stint as a director of special ed. And Mr. Ball was doing an interim, he had retired from Coventry in 1990, but then he didn't retire, because you worked through, I think, 2009, 2010. But you were doing an interim assistant principal, and I saw how other administrators are not, not judging, but it was very much punitive, and kind of like the pound of flesh mentality. And when I saw Mr. Ball talk to kids, you put your hand on your shoulder, and I would see the calm and ease go through students, and so I just gravitated. And, and that was back in 2002, we've been friends ever since. And the one thing I bought, John, and I say this to Mr. Coward, there you go, all the time. So when I called John, and this, I went to his 90th party, birthday party, I was fortunate to be able to speak. And, but one of the themes was with Mr. Ball, is that every time he ends a conversation, right? And you guys, obviously, his family is here, he always ends it with, "Love you," right? And so, I'm, I'm there, and it's like, here I am, having a bad day, or, you know, as a superintendent, you know, every day is crazy, right? And, but I get on the phone with John, and I talk in the end, saying, "Love you," you know, and I say, "Love you too," you know, and it's like, just an incredible, like, on my best day, I don't have, I couldn't be anywhere close as a better person you are. So I've been so privileged to have you in my life, you've been such a force in Coventry, and I can't imagine the thousands and thousands of individuals. So, I'm just proud to recognize you, and I, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for me.
I accept it with humility.
To the school committee, and then anybody in the audience, if that's okay, I'll step out of the way.
Okay, I'll, I guess I'll start with Mr. Florio, comments?
Hi, Mr. Ball. Rarely see you outside of church. It's good to see you, and I know you did a lot of work for this district for many years, with an exemplary record. I can only testify to your character, which is fantastic. You're loved at St. John, St. Vincent de Paul, and I'm just missing Father Yasek. If he was here, he'd say the same thing, you're a wonderful man, and thank you very much for your commitment to, to Coventry and the community, thank you very much. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Florio, Mrs. Anna Dos Reyes Kudo.
Well, pleasure to meet you, thank you so much for your commitment through the years, and everything you've done for the school and Coventry, thank you.
Ms. Kalunian?
Nice to meet you. I, I want to thank you also for your commitment to Coventry and to our community, and, you know, just the students, everyone that you come in contact with, like Mr. Levis said, you've made an impression on, and that's, so that's something nice to hold on to. Congratulations.
Mr. Pearson?
I'll just keep it short, thank you for everything that you do for our community, it's, it's obviously, everyone in the room is, is very appreciative of all of it, so, thank you.
Whoa, 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 wait about me? I give everybody a chance, that is me, I know. So, obviously, I can't thank you enough, this community loves you, and I know how much you love this community. Thank you for all of your service, all the years you've done so many things, far and above the average person, mainly because you've been so healthy, all the way to your, whatever, 90th. So congratulations on your birthday, and also on just all your willingness to always step forward and help and volunteer, and even as you retired, you still kept so active in this community, so. And as a teacher principal, you, you've just been fabulous, so, I, I, I wouldn't be able to express all the feelings I have for you, Mr. Ball, so, congratulations.
I was just going to say, many of Mr. Ball's family are here to, and I appreciate that, because I did this very, even though I knew he was going to do this, I did it, kept it a secret last minute, because I wanted it to be a surprise for everybody. But I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that wants to say something to Mr. Ball, feel free. If one's family spokesperson wants to say something. Don't make me look bad. Fortunate to have him in our lives, to be our father, to have him live so long, it's a wonderful thing. He knows we appreciate it. Thank you. And I, I do thank you for coming, and I appreciate it, I know that's important. All right, Mr. Ball.
Feel like I've been roasted.
That'll be when we go to Newport Cream. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Casey, you mind coming up? Just want to read this, the same, but then I want to say just a few words, and I'm sure if we'll go through the school committee again, and I'm sure one or two people might want to say something to you, or about you. So, this award recognizes John "Jack" Casey for a lifetime of service and commitment to the Coventry Public School community. Thousands of students, families, and staff have experienced the impact of your contribution. Thank you for building a strong foundation that will allow future generations the opportunity to grow and succeed. We are forever grateful for the role you have played in developing the core values of Coventry Public Schools. Thank you very much. Can I say the same thing about Kelly? When I first came here, my experience often working with unions hasn't been always positive, and that's just my experience. When I, one of my first days here, Mr. Casey pops in my office and introduces himself, and I heard about you, but you came in and said, "Anything you need?" "No, anything you need," and, and, but you're a man of your word. There were so many times that early on, and I faced some adversity here, we all know, and some political adversity, and especially around the budget, and you would call me up and be inspirational. You would pop by, and you would also, but not only give me your word, you'd be out there, whether it's social media, or making phone calls, advocating, telling people to give me a break, that I'm a good guy, and I truly, and I truly appreciate that, you know? And the other part is that, I looked at, and I, you know, I've been in education since 1985, not always in public education, worked for private sector. And one of the things that we hear, we talk about today, is about our teachers and our staff, and, and really making sure that we have good working conditions, you know? And we all know the conditions of our building, but what you've really done, in my experience, in my eyes, is that you've really laid this professional foundation. I've never been in a, in a place where, just the culture, the philosophy of, of the teachers, I know you've been the CEO of the CTA for how many years? Hundred years. You've really helped in terms of the professionalism, the quality. When we talk, when I meet with any of the union or meet with Kelly, the focus is, even though we're talking about adults, because that's the job, the focus is about improving the quality for students, and you've always done that with me, and I, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to just say thank you very much. Thank you. You can say a few words.
First of all, I admire your head, John, you've got an excellent job, because I'm here for another reason, I'm no longer the highest salary in the room. They did a very good job, yeah, I believe, and what, speaking of the quality of teachers that are here, and everybody else, I spent an hour, which is ridiculous, I've got a good crowd here tonight, and these are the best teachers, I think, in the state of Rhode Island. It's an excellent school district, we should be proud of it, and they're all doing very well here. Many, many still doing an excellent job. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, and all the teachers that are here tonight, I think we're proud here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, do you mind if the committee, you're welcome to sit down if you want, but we don't have
Taking minutes of my son, who's a junior, I'm going to sit you with. And my guy, you like it for the past 15 years.
She's a saint. I'm going to turn on Ms. Patnold, and then I'm sure there's some people in the audience.
So I, I always speak last, Mr. Casey, so I'm going to let Mr. Florio start.
Hi, Mr. Casey. We've known each other since 1994, when I was Democratic town chair, and you were president, and Mr. Berger, your best buddy, were president of the CTA together. I go back to the 70s, when I actually met Albert Shanker and Edward McElroy, and I was involved with Mount Pleasant Tutorial, and my old professor, Doc Avril, used to say, "The NEA is a professional organization, the AFT is the fighting organization, it's the one that gets benefits and helps teachers." And that always rang with me, and when I met you, it hit the, it really, really inspired me. And you, you, and, you and Mr. Berger inspired me to be Democratic town chair, and to make sure everything went right, and I try to do the same thing as a school committee person. And I talk to you often, and you are a good friend and a good mentor. Thank you.
Mrs. Dos Reyes Kudo.
Mr. Casey, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for everything you've done to make Coventry Public Schools and our schools strong. And I hope that someday, somehow, I make a little bit of a difference, as you and Mr. Ball in our community, so thank you.
Mrs. Kalunian?
Congratulations on the award, now, we've never met, but I've heard many, many good things about you, and you are well deserving of that award. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Pearson?
I'll just say the same, congratulations on the recognition, and thank you for your many years of service to Coventry. Thank you.
And Mr. Casey, as you know, I, I'm finishing up my 20th year on school committee, you might have lost track of that. Anyway, I think I met you, I was elected in 2002, so I think I probably met you in 2000-ish, or whatever. I knew of you, because I was council president for PTA, so we knew of you. So it was a pleasure to have you as a mentor, I think I first met you with Mrs. Aronakis, and you were so supportive of me running, and I reached out to the, the CTA and had their support, and I've supported them since. I, I guess that's kind of why Mr. Levis recognized me, which was a complete surprise. You're as surprised as I am, believe me. I knew this was happening, and I supported his, you know, this recognition from the superintendent, we all did, and thought it was a great idea for him to continue, and maybe hopefully, the new superintendent will do the same tradition. So I think, because I think it's important to recognize leaders in our community, but I certainly recognize you as a leader, and when he said your name, I was like, yes, of course, Mr. Ball. I was just, you know, so I knew, except for me, obviously. But, so congratulations, I was so glad you could make it, and stay healthy, and thank you for all your service. I mean, I, I, you know, it's just amazing, the service you've done in Coventry, so I'm really glad. I'm sure you've gotten other honors as well, but this has to be the best, I know.
Best one tonight.
Best one tonight, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Does anybody in the audience want to say something, Mr. Ball?
Yeah, we, we usually are the opposite side of the table, but I want you to know this, that you always treated each other with respect. I think you've done a wonderful job over the years, and like I said, based on this mutual respect, well, congratulations, Pat.
So I'll never forget, perhaps way around 2000, Jack Casey go over and came to me and said, "You're going to be next president of CTA." What to do? Something's no changed. And Jack stayed with me, by my side, for four years straight. Everything that I learned, everything today that I do well is because of him. Everything I do poorly is because of me. In fact, you've been a mentor, you've been a family member of mine, we spend our holidays together, we walk the yard all the time, I love you dearly. I can't imagine what this should mean, the staff would be like if it wasn't for you. We all, we should learn some gratitude, and it's funny that Dave said at the end, he had to tell me that we had to do quite a day, we got that backwards. But, talking about professional, you know, Jack always said to me, I won't forget what he said one time, you know, with all my great, good metrics, he said, "You know, Pat, if you're always breathing, both sides are always breathing." So, you know, Greg mentions the fact that in Coventry, we don't, don't, please don't think we always get along, we have that, but generally, we have those. And then Jack also said something smart, when you finally just can't breathe, let the third party settle, let the fourth party. You know, Coventry, you know, Jack, part of starting the CTA scholarship back in the late 70s, because of that, today, we give students $100,000 each year. So, you know, we don't talk about, you know, he means a lot about teachers. Jack always said, he asked him at the negotiating table, Al Shanker had said, "I negotiate for teachers, but he can't do that." So many things in our contract that take care of kids, you know? All I can do is hope that, as long as these crazy people keep going, you know? Try to hold up a small one, because I've done, but just thank you very much, I love you dearly.
All right, Miss Patno. Are you coming down?
I just have to say my daughter-in-law, the audience, I said no. You kept that a great secret.
I am, you know what?
I've only been surprised in my life three times.
That's all right. I didn't tell anybody, because I was afraid if I told, I mean, some people. And I, I needed to get a few people into the, into the plan, but we know there are no secrets in Coventry, so I had to keep it pretty, pretty close, anyway. And I do want to thank everybody that came tonight to support, you know, family members and the family, and Mr. Ball's family. I just want to thank you, because it's so important, right? Like I've learned, and I say this all the time, and I know this is about you, not me, but family, the most important thing, and I think as Superintendent, and I know Mr. Coward's the same way, I always say, "Family first," right? No matter what, you need to take care of your family. And I know the pandemic has really solidified that. I just spent, my brother came from California, and we spent some time together, and it's like, there's nothing more important. So this, we are family, right? That's the beauty of Coventry Public Schools, we're family, you know? We truly act like a family, which means we fight and we do the other thing. So anyways, let me go back to this. This award recognizes Kathryn Patno for a lifetime of service and commitment to the Coventry Public School community. Thousands of students, families, and staff have experienced the impact of your contributions, exclamation point. Thank you for building a strong foundation that will allow future generations the opportunity to grow and succeed. We are forever grateful for the role you have played in developing the core values of Coventry Public Schools. And that's me, Superintendent of Schools, for another week. Congratulations. Again, you know, you know, Ms. Patno has been in the School Committee twenty years, Chair, how many? Fourteen years. You've received distinguished awards from the National Association of School Committees, and I know you were very involved with the PTA. And so we're talking about, we're talking about individuals here that have impacted literally thousands of, not just students, families, but of staff, myself. I, I know I wouldn't be here still today if it wasn't for your support. And, and early on in my, my, my Superintendency, and I, I appreciate so much. And, and like I said, it's the relationship, the, the ability just to call you and be honest and not worry about judgment, judging, you know? Like, and there's been times when I've been heated, right? And I'm like, I don't like what you say, and I tell you. And there's times I'm sure you don't like what I say, but I love that open, honest relationship. And I, and I feel like I have that with the entire committee with the previous. But I think that's so important, that we, that doesn't exist in every community. The foundation that we have here, the culture that we have, coming through a pandemic, and yeah, people are stressed about this and that, but that solid foundation, you've been such a big part of that, as, as Mr. Ball and Mr. Casey. So I just want to say, from, from, from me, thank you. You've helped me be the best person that I can be in this role, and, and I can't thank you enough. So having said that, I'm going to give you a round of applause, and then, since you can't talk about yourself, I'll turn it over to Mr. Florio.
Okay.
Which means you probably want to go down the line for a statement, I'm just saying.
Just follow my tradition.
I'll follow your tradition. Ms. Anne Rais.
Well, Kathy, congratulations. What can I say? Thank you for the short time that I've been a School Committee member. I have learned a lot about you, and the conversations that I hold with you, and I have a lot of questions, because I'm so new at this. You've always been there, honestly, to tell me, and in a calm and truthful manner, and I appreciate that. And I hope that when you do move off School Committee, that if you can be my emeritus for when I really need to ask one of those questions. So congratulations, and thank you for everything you've done for the School Committee, for our community, for this, the Coventry Public Schools. I don't have any other words to say, but thank you.
The school.
Kathy, you have been a mentor to me. When, when I first started, I did nothing about School Committee, and you were the one person, as Anna said, you were the one person that, you know, you always answered my questions. You all, you were always right there. You answered emails, you answered texts, everything. And, you know, you've actually given yourself to this community over half your life. If you think about it, PTA, School Committee, you know, I mean, School Committee's twenty years, and then PTA before that, so, so yeah, you know, I mean, and that's something to be proud of. This, this community is really, really lucky to have somebody like you. And you are going to be sadly missed on the School Committee, but not by me, because I'm not going to be here either. But, but, but you, I know that you will be sadly missed, your leadership, everything.
I'm sorry. That was perfect. Sorry about that.
But I just, I just want you to know how much your leadership has meant to me as, you know, a, a School Committee member, and, you know, just for everything that you've done, and I really do appreciate that. Thanks.
Mr. Pearson. Madam Chair. I want to thank you for, at least the time since I've been here, the, the steady hand you've used to lead this committee, and, and during some troubling seas at some times, seems like every year with the budget, or, or other issues that percolate. You always approach things with a very pragmatic sense, and, and, and it reflected upon the rest of us to look toward you and say, okay, we can approach these issues with cool heads and, and calm minds, and we'll get through it, no matter what. And, and that leadership has been very much appreciated, and so I want to thank you very much, and congratulate you for all the twenty years plus that you've put into this, helping improve our schools. So thank you.
Madam Chair, Kathy, we've known each other since, God, either 1998 or 2000, 2000, and twenty, 2022. And it's, you've done such a wonderful job. Twenty years. Together. In one way or another. And yes, we've had our disagreements, but we've always come to rational decisions, and you're magnificent. That's it. You're welcome.
I'm going to ask, does anybody, anybody in the audience that wants to, is Anzaloni?
So, same time, I was trying to speak, but as I sat here, I got emotional, because all three of the people that are recognized here have been a part of my career in Coventry. As I sat on the sidelines and saw all of them, that these three participated in, not getting a lot of, on that, I'd be able to tell you that I thought of the work I was just sitting at, about the so incredible support from when I was a brand-new teacher at Blackhawk, and Agnes Long, the other lady, the reading teacher, and Agnes would never leave, all of the projects she did had gone after. Mr. Ball, I'm sorry, I never called you John.
Why, it's beautiful.
And whether it was reading week, or some kind of a play or dance show that we were doing, Mr. Ball was there, supporting and helping, right by Agnes's side. Or when I sat as a young teacher in the audience of first union meetings, and watched Bill and Jack stand side by side next to Kelly, and I thought, my gosh, how awesome is that, that they're like, helping to bring in the best leader. And so when Kelly said it, I'm like, I remember those moments right in front of the stage, the frame of standing there together. And then finally, as I speak for the Western community, and I know I keep myself together here when I say this, but my meeting with Kathy was through Jan Salving, who was my mentor, and Jan's very, very close friend. And Jan could not have said nicer things about Kathy throughout the entire time. I had the pleasure of working with her, about her support for the PTA, about her support for the Western community, about her dedication to our school community, and eventually, obviously, on the school page. So, I mean, supportive sounds like such a simple word, but I just can't thank or forgive you enough, because although you didn't know that I sat on the sidelines and watched you, you're like pillars in this community. So I appreciate it.
Well, it'd be nice.
I'm going to try to hold it together, because I get very pissed, my daughter-in-law and I know I can cry very easily, especially when I'm touching you. So, first of all, it's been an honor to serve Coventry in all the ways that I live. And I'll miss my time on School Committee, as I miss my time as, you know, PTA leader. But I, I do think that, I hope, I accept this with humility, obviously. It's a great honor, and I hope that made a difference in people's lives, because I feel like all of you have made a difference. So, I always said as a PTA leader, not so much as a School Committee leader, that you do what you do, especially if you have children, to be a model to your children. And I really, truly believe. Certainly gave that model to my daughter. And so she basically is a leader in mission work. So those kind of things happen, and I think that if you do that, you get things back that you'd never even dreamed or thought you'd ever get back. And so these years, I'll always remember, and I thank you all for coming here, and I thank you, Mr. Levis, for honoring me with this. I'd be excited about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll take a picture. Oh, my dear.
You guys gave it away. I saw him walking.
We didn't know when to walk in, but I was so busy.
That happened, let's explore it. And I asked, she was in the back, and I went, oh, no.
I'll jump in after.
Go on down, guys. Can you see him one way?
I'll, I'll squat. So, we have coffee, and water, and pastry, and pizza, so we're going to take a few minutes. So please help yourself. I will take the covers off, and then we're going to reconvene in a little bit to go into executive session, so. So please help yourself. So, please help yourself.
Those of you who were here when my phone went off, I always shut it off. 7717.
About insurance or Medicare?
No, it was my brother. He never calls me from me. Whatever. He didn't know. Anyway, so could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we remain standing for a moment of silence as we consider the working force this evening. Thank you. You may be seated. And Mr. Levis, if you could inform the public of the emergency exits, please.
In case of emergency, the exits are to your rear and exit into the foyer. You can go to your left, your right, to the exterior of the building.
Thank you. And remember, Mr. Pearson, if you could honor us with reading the mission of Coventry Public Schools, please.
The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. And just to inform the public, the school committee met an executive session for about 15 minutes prior to this particular open session, and we talked about student matters, homeschooling, job performance and character of Superintendent-elect Mr. Cowitt. We approved our executive session minutes. There were two votes taken. One was, they were both unanimous, five to zero. That being said, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session minutes be kept closed pursuant to section 42 that's 46 that's four and 42 that's 46 that's.
I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to approval of minutes. In your package, you had the minutes, you have the minutes from open meeting 9/8/2022. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 9/8/2022. Let's present this slide.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item number, I guess we're moving on to the public agenda. So the remaining items are open to the public for discussion. If there is a vote involved, we will allow for public comment before we call for the vote. So number seven is the superintendent's contract discussion and vote. Is there any discussion from the committee? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero. So I think we can do a congratulations here. Oh, I jumped. I jumped. I jumped the gun to the next one. Wait a minute, let him start. It's the next item. You know, I should know my agenda by heart, but of course I don't, and I have COVID brain still. So I was so excited that we approved your contract.
Me too.
Moving on to agenda number eight. You know, to God. Introduction of Mr. Don Cowitt as Superintendent of Coventry Public Schools. Mr. Levis, would you like to start this, please?
Sure, I'll just start. But I think it's important, the last time we had a meeting and where the committee voted effective October 1st for Don, it was kind of, you know, I don't know if it took people by surprise, but I felt that when we talked about this, that it's important for Don to be recognized by the school committee and be able to invite his family, who is, his wife is here, and two of his three daughters are here. And I think it's important, you know, I can say for myself, you know, having the role of superintendent has been, you know, incredible experience and incredible responsibility. But I think to have that public acknowledgement, so, you know, I'll be brief and just say, I'm very proud of you and I'm very blessed to be in this situation and, you know, congratulations. And we know that the work will continue for many, many more years. So, but anyways, I just want to say that publicly, and I think it's a good opportunity for the school committee to congratulate you, and then hopefully one or two of the individuals in the public might have some, maybe some kind words to say about you. So.
So starting with Mr. Florio. Any comments? Congratulations, whatever.
Congratulations, Don. I think you're going to be a wonderful superintendent. I'm glad you chose us, and I'm glad Mr. Levis is staying with us, too. We have an excellent leadership team, and I look forward to working with both of you. Thank you for staying, and thank you, Mr. Levis, for staying.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mrs. Doseface Kudo?
Thank you for staying. It's a pleasure to be part of your leadership as well, working with your leadership, I should say. But thank you for everything. Congratulations.
Mrs. Kalunian.
Don, we had our conversation earlier, but I am so happy that you decided to stay and that you're going to be the new superintendent, and I'm happy that Mr. Levis is staying on to mentor you, and I just think it's going to be a great, it's going to be a great leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson.
Congratulations. I want to say welcome aboard, but you're already on board. And I have to put some weight to this. So I look forward to working with you over the next four years, which will be about 50 school committee meetings. Already counted. No, definitely looking forward to it.
And finally, I couldn't be more pleased. The minute I met you at Washington Oak School, I was like, I remember, you know, I was on the school committee, obviously, and I went to my PTA local school meetings all the time, and I remember thinking, wow, you gave a presentation on school report night, and that can be one of the most dense, some of the parents, just their eyes start to close, because if you get too technical with them, they just, you know, they start to lose focus, and they're like, huh? And he was the first principal, not to offend any other principal here that I've gone to and heard their school report night. Some of you have done very good jobs, but Mr. Cowitt really did an amazing job. So it was an amazing job. And so I remember saying, wow. And all the parents were like, listening really, and engaged, because he was so like, him. He was animated, and like, he just made it so that it was something to enjoy. People, some people don't like data, obviously. I'm a science person. I like data. So even if someone was a little boring in another school, to most parents, it wasn't to me. I loved it. But I know from a parent perspective, it could be kind of like, huh, do we really have to go through this? But anyway, Don was the first one that I actually went, oh my goodness, it can be done excitingly, you know? And I remember leaving that meeting saying, that's a superintendent in the making. I just remember saying that in my head. And I mean, he was still going to work, you know, as a building principal, and then luckily he came to Central. we know that the work will continue for many, many more years. So, but, but anyways, I just want to say, say that publicly, and I think it's a good opportunity for the school committee to congratulate you, and then hopefully one or two of the individuals in the public might have some, maybe some kind words to say about you. So.
So starting with Mr. Florio, any comments, congratulations, whatever?
Congratulations, Don. I think you're going to be a wonderful superintendent. I'm glad you chose us, and I'm glad Mr. Levis is staying with us too. We have an excellent leadership team. And I look forward to working with both of you. Thank you for staying, and thank you, Mr. Levis, for staying.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mrs. Dos Reis Kudo?
Thank you for staying. It's a pleasure to be part of your leadership as well. Working with your leadership, I should say, but thank you for everything. Congratulations.
Mrs. Kalunian?
Don, we had our conversation earlier, but, but I am so happy that you decided to stay and that you're going to be the new superintendent. And I'm happy that Mr. Levis is staying on to mentor you, and I just think it's going to be a great, it's going to be a great leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson?
Congratulations. I want to say welcome aboard, but you're already on board. And I have to put some weight to this. So I look forward to working with you over the next four years, which will be about fifty school committee meetings. Already counted. No, definitely looking forward to it.
And finally, I couldn't be more pleased. The minute I met you at Washington Oak School, I was like, I remember, you know, I was a PT, I was on the school committee, obviously. And I went to my PTA local school meetings all the time, and I remember thinking, wow, you gave a presentation on school report night, and that can be one of the most dense. Some of the parents, just their eyes start to close, because if you get too technical with them, they just, you know, they start to lose focus, and they're like, huh? And he was the first principal, not to offend any other principal here, that I've gone to and heard their school report night. Some of you have done very good jobs. But Mr. Cowett really did an amazing job. So it was an amazing job. And so I remember saying, wow. And all this, all the parents were like, listening really, and engaged, because he was so like, him. He was animated and, and like, he just made it so that it was something to enjoy. People, some people don't like data, obviously. I'm a science person. I like data. So even if someone was a little boring in another school, to most parents, it wasn't to me. I loved it. But I know what, from a parent perspective, it could be kind of like, huh? Do we really have to go through this? But anyway, Don was the first one that I actually went, oh, my goodness, it can be done excitingly, you know? And I remember leaving that meeting saying, that's a superintendent in the making. I just remember saying that in my head. And I mean, he was still going to work, you know, as a building principal, and then luckily he came to Central Office, and I've always been impressed with his communication style, the way he's been able to present data to us as a school committee in a way that was very understanding and clear. And I just know that the work you've done here already will continue. And since I'm going to be outgoing, obviously, I won't have a lot of time to be chair with you. But I feel like the plan that Mr. Levis came up with to sort of put the reins in your hands and still be here, just in case there was need for mentoring, couldn't have been a better plan. I know, but I'm just, I know you're kidding, but I just, I think it was, it was a wonderfully selfless thing to do on Mr. Levis's part. And I definitely feel that you're up for the position. You're ready to go. And I have no doubt that I'm leaving the district in very good hands. And so I couldn't be more proud and pleased that we were able to do this and that I was part of the decision, because it could have happened when I was already gone. And, and some, and obviously, Mrs. Kalunian is leaving too. So, so pleased for you, and so, so congratulations, and congratulations to your family, because I know they're part of it. You know, he's going to be twenty-four-seven as a superintendent, so you're always on call. So it's, it's a lonely job in a lot of ways, so you do need support, and I'm really glad that they have you to support him. So, so after saying that, would you like to say anything and/or do you want to just bring it out to the public? I think you should say something maybe, and then we'll put it out to the public.
So I spoke last, last time this topic was up, so I'm going to try really hard not to repeat myself, but I will say that having my wife and two of my three daughters here is great. And I said at the last meeting, I've been very fortunate to have a supportive network at home so that I can, you know, do my job and still be able to maintain positive relationships, because I think that's important. And Craig has always said, and I truly believe this is the case, that family is always first, and we always try to find ways to strike that balance. So I'm glad they're here. I was saying to Mrs. Aronakis that my wife and kids have only attended two meetings that I was at. My first meeting, there were five principals being appointed that night. The superintendent was out, and I got a tap on the shoulder saying that I was not going to be appointed that night, and that none of the candidates were going to be appointed that night. And I had my wife, my oldest daughter, who's here, was five. My youngest daughter, who's here, was in a, like a car seat, and they were all dressed up in like matching little girl outfits, and we had to discreetly, quietly find our way out the door. So the next time they had the meeting and I was appointed, they didn't come. But they did come when I got appointed as principal in two thousand thirteen. And Kathy and Dave were both on that committee that appointed me into that position, and so almost ten years later, they're here again. Yes, Dave?
Judy Liner?
That's right.
That's, that's why I voted for you.
Yeah.
Because Judy was so positive and upbeat about your appointment. She was on your interview team, and to this day, she still supports you.
Yep.
She is so happy you're superintendent.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was, I was so lucky that, coming from Cranston into Coventry, that I had a few connections that carried over from one community to the other. We actually have an employee in the district now who works for us, but her kids were students at Washington Oak, and I was a principal in Cranston. And she actually bought a house in the neighborhood where I was principal, because she wanted her kids to go to school where I, not because of where I was, but she, it was an added benefit. And then I came to Washington Oak where she had just left. And she's like, why did you leave? I just left Washington Oak to go to Hope Highlands, and now you're at Washington Oak. I said, well, I'm sorry, I didn't consult you first. I apologize for that. So I feel very lucky. And then the only other thing I was going to say is that, and this is, this is a true story. It doesn't sound true, but it's absolutely true. When I got my first principalship, my grandmother was alive, and she said to me, she's not alive anymore. She's, she's passed away a number of years ago. She said, you're going to be a superintendent someday. And I said, Grandma, I'm not even really a principal yet. I haven't figured any of this out. There's no way I'm going to be a superintendent. And you can ask my wife, till like the day she died, every time I saw her, she said that to me. And so to think that now I'm a superintendent, it's kind of amazing that she had that foresight and thought of that about me before I even thought about it for myself. So I thought that was pretty amazing. So that's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Anyone from, anyone from the public like to get up and say anything?
I'm sorry, I was off. Anyone from the public, would you like to share any? Come on, at least Mr. Cowett's family could say something. God. Oh, this Kelly, Kelly's going to say something too. We'll get you next. Name, name, address for the, name, address for the record, please.
My name is Jen Howard.
Make sure that things turned on there.
All right.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Can I just say something? I don't, I don't think the public, it, it's just something I worry about when you give, if you give the, the address of your home, all of a sudden, you're going to have, you know, I, all I can picture are see, people demonstrating.
You mean if Mr. Cowett makes a decision, don't worry about that. Everybody knows where we live.
You can also Google.
I'm sorry.
A second.
Go ahead.
My name is Jen Howard. My address is one Carrot Road in Cranston. I represent all of the Cowards here, and my in-laws as well, who are very, very proud of him. I will tell you, he works tirelessly. He works in the most dedicated manner and passionate manner of anyone that I know, and we are so, so proud of him. He has worked, you know, morning to night, and like you said, twenty-four-seven. So we are really proud. We're very, very happy for him, and we are very appreciative of Mr. Levis as well for the years that he's been mentoring him up to this point, and as he will be in the days ahead. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cowett.
Just want to say on behalf of the teachers, Don, when you did come here at Washington Oak School, there had been a lot of change. They need some stability. We brought that. People were very appreciative of it. You had a, it's hard to explain. You have, you have the personality where you can have a tough conversation with someone. But yes, they, they don't feel it anymore. You have a leadership. You're beginning to do a great job.
That's true.
You know, Craig will get a message when you eventually go. But I think you did a good job here of putting Don in there. We've already told each other no, so we're going to pick up right where Craig and I left off. Nobody's told me no, so, you know. Don has a doggy work ethic. He's done curriculum, he's been a principal, assistant superintendent, you know, teacher. It's really nice when someone comes through the ranks because they truly understand.
So true.
And it's, it's really hard if you don't. You'll just always say welcome on someone too, but we need to do it. Now that you're at the top of the ship, you understand we have to take care of you. So we wish you well and love you on board. Thank you.
And my final, is anybody else want to say anything? Are we all set? My final comment is I truly believe in promoting from within as well, because it's that kind of leadership that, I mean, I'm leaving Brown too, and I'm hoping that one of my staff will in fact get my job as well. I'm not one of those people who say, oh, let's go on the outside. They got to be better, whatever, because that causes turmoil. And so the growth we've seen, the movement ahead we have seen with curriculum, all of those things are in progress. And they'll continue, and people won't say, oh, what's that person going to be like? And, you know, because that's what, that's the natural inclination. You don't, you have to get to know them and figure out them, and so Don's a non-
It's already done.
Quantity, basically, and basically a very good one that everybody gets along with. So, and I agree a hundred percent with you, Mrs. Aronakis, that it's not because he's just like says yes to everything. He will make tough decisions, but somehow his communication, and that's why I brought up the communication, his ability to tell a parent, for example, or a teacher or another administrator, what needs to get done, but do it in a way that they don't go, you know, hate that guy or hate that girl. So that's what I admire most about his personality and that trait. I see some nods of heads over there from the families, your daughters. Anyway, so I've said enough. So again, congratulations. I'm so happy that you're going to be our new superintendent. So. Okay, so did you guys get refreshments yet? Because there's a whole bunch of, okay, good. All right. Okay, so I guess we can move on to number nine, which is the school bidding, bidding, building committee update. And that's probably going to be, is that going to be a joint thing, Mr. Pearson and Mrs. Dos Reis Kudo? Would you want to start, Mr. Levis?
No.
Do you guys want to start that? Because James, you must, Mr. Pearson, you must know an update, or you could give us, was there a meeting last night? At the town council?
Monday.
Monday, sorry, sorry, Monday night. Would you like to give us a synopsis of that?
Okay, sure. There's actually been two meetings of the school building committee so far. First meeting was, you know, introductory, but we also spent a lot of time reviewing bids. All the bidders for the consultants came in and gave a presentation. There were, there were five in total. And it was a good, good opportunity to get to know them a little better, see the information they had to present, understand more of their background, and it was an opportunity for a lot of Q and A. So that was the bulk of the first meeting. We also had a meeting this week where the main task was choosing the vendors. So we had a lot of healthy discussion around the pros and cons of the vendors. And going through the scoring, we ultimately decided as a school building committee to go with Studio Jade as a recommendation to the council. So we expect the council next, next week will be voting on selecting the vendor, the consultant, and also setting an initial amount for our cap, so to speak, for, for a bond. I say it's the initial amount because there is the possibility that as building committee meets more and gets more information, you know, they do have an opportunity to revise that before this goes out to the voters. But we need that initial number upfront, so we know what we're working with and can start getting that stage two application put together. That's about it so far.
So were all the members appointed? Or are there any empty seats still?
I think there are still a couple empty community member seats.
Yeah.
But we do, we do have some excellent representation. I think some members of the previous building committee have, have come back on board. So I guess we're just waiting for the council to fill those, those couple remaining seats.
And so I know I saw on the agenda they were going to vote for a chair. Did that happen or not?
Yes.
And so who was the chair?
Hillary Lima, Councilwoman Hillary Lima is the chairperson. I was elected vice chair.
Good. Okay, that sounds like a good mix.
That is a good mix.
I think so.
It is.
Cool. Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Anna, did you want to, not to say that he missed anything, but do you? Did you want to add anything to that?
No, he was pretty on point.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pearson from the committee? From the administration? From the public? We're good? Okay. So we can move on to number ten, which is the Facility Equity Initiative Discussion, which was our reference number ten. And I assume, is that you, Mr. Levis?
No, I'm going to defer to Mr. Cowett.
Okay.
And I actually think this item really dovetails nicely into the last item about school construction. You know, we've, we've developed a nice working relationship with Mario Correno from Department of Ed. He's consulted with us and supported us a lot recently on the last bond, but also specifically on the discussions that we've started with this new building initiative. He reached out to Mr. Levis and I and let us know that there was going to be an event in Central Falls at one of the middle schools, and that they were rolling out this second round of equity initiative funding. And so I attended, and at that event, they showcased some of the work that had been done at Central Falls. They were one of the original four or five districts identified as receiving these additional funds. It's, and it's funny because it's earmarked towards school construction and improvements with an eye on innovation and, and, and impact. But it doesn't necessarily go through the same building committee process of having to go through bonding and all of that. All we have to do is submit an application and prioritize our projects, and then it goes into a competitive grant process, and they, they distribute funding. So fortunately for us, Coventry was identified one of the, the next five districts, along with Cranston, Lincoln, Burrville, and I'm missing one community. It will come to me. But there were four or five other communities that were added to this list. So the, the pool of funds is about thirty million dollars. It's not to say that it's going to be divided equally amongst all groups, but we will get funding. And so Mr. Levis and I have already started discussing with each other, and we're going to open the conversation up to some other people after this meeting about what, what's the project or projects that we want to put into this application with an eye on impact and equity and innovation. And so we've discussed things like science labs. We've discussed things like high school auditoriums and gymnasiums, and all these projects that we've been talking about for a long time that we just haven't had the funding to, to, to attack. It's, the other thing I was going to say, because I actually went in this direction and realized right away, this was not the direction. When he invited me to this event and we talked about the potential funding, I initially said to myself, oh, we could pay for that roof at the middle school. It's not that kind of funding. That kind of funding has to really probably still go through like a bond. This is about the kind of innovative impactful projects that people can see, and people, and people can, it provides equity, and it also can be a project that impacts not just the school community, but the community at large. So I'm not going to say much more than that, but we do have an opportunity to get additional funding pretty quickly, actually. So we're pretty excited about that.
When is it due? I, I know there must have been a date on here, but I didn't see it.
You know, I'll have to look at the application. I want to say it was the end of the month, but Mario also had volunteered to come down and meet with Mr. Levis and I to kind of go through the application. They, they, they put a packet together that highlights the kind of projects they've approved in the past, and also the kinds of projects they've not funded in the past. So that's going to help guide us through that process. But the application isn't something that's going to, I think, take us too long. It's more about us coming up with the right projects that are going to have, like I said, the impact that, you know, RIDE determines to be, you know, innovative and providing equity to our school community.
That sounds pretty exciting. Any comments or concerns for anybody? Mr. Florio?
None.
Mrs. Dos Reis Kudo?
None.
Mrs. Kalunian?
Nada.
Mr. Pearson?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
I think it's an exciting opportunity, and I just hope that, you know, with Mario on our side especially guiding us, I think we have a good chance. I'm so glad. I was so glad to see our, our town listed. And when I looked to see what things were available for doing, then hey, every bit of money we can get. I mean, the need in Coventry is huge. We all know that. So I'm glad that other people have noticed that as well. Anything from the public on this? Okay, then I guess we can go on to number ten, which is, no, sorry, number eleven. Number eleven, the finance director's end of year. What? Mr. Sands?
Thank you very much. The end of the year report tonight, I'm just going to go through the highlights. S R Funds have funded so far math and reading interventions and substitutes in the tune of one point two million dollars. Summer programs, S R Funds have funded summer programs that impacted over seven hundred, six hundred Coventry students. S R Funds have purchased three thousand, over three thousand Chromebooks for savings of over a million dollars. And the revamping of school curriculum to RIDE guidelines is also a savings of about a million dollars. We also had two other grants. DLC, which is a RIDO grant, or with Allen Department of Health. It's supported, it supports the school community with a COVID dedicated nurse. And we've saved over two hundred thousand dollars on that. The ECF grant, which is a federal grant, increased our capability of going to a one-to-one initiative down to pre-K and kindergarten, as well as supplying teachers, TAs with computers and Chromebooks. We did, we did have some increases in, in, in our payroll or in that area, in, in payroll and. or in, in that area, in, in payroll and benefits. And they were primarily due to labor shortages that bumped up substitute wages by over $200,000, leave, leave of absences due to the pandemic and classroom overages and illnesses. Do predominantly because of the pandemic. Finally, we do, on, on the horizon, we have quite a bit going on. The energy contracts and net metering that we have coming up. The energy contracts actually started this past year. And we're looking at a savings of, of around 200,000 in, in the energy contracts alone, the net metering, which will start in 23, towards the end of 23 fiscal year will also save us about $200,000. Couple that with lunch reserves, which were over 300,000 for this past year, because everybody got free lunches. And transportation, transportation changes, we're looking at another 500,000 in savings coming up this year. Most of those will, in, in, in the lunch reserves, that, that'll, that'll save us from for this year, for, for the losses that we'll, we normally have because of lunch. And finally, the fund balance, which we also call the due to, due, due from has been fully reconciled to 3,500,000 to the town. The town has already given us 1.3 million. We're, we're waiting on the other 2.2 million. Coventry Schools has, has not received any impact fees since 2020. And that's one thing that we'll be working on this year so that we can use that for capital improvements going forward. Those are the highlights of my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Florio, any questions? Mrs. Does race kudo?
No questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Kalunian?
No questions. Thank you for the report.
Mr. Pearson?
Question you may or may not know the answer to, for the remaining 2.2 million of, of the due to, due from, has the council voted on that yet?
Can I, I just, yes, I, I received an email today. I reached out to the town manager. Miss Dr. Dixon and I reached the town manager, I'd said that the last, was it October 24th? Council meeting, or I think November 14th council meeting, he plans on putting it forward at that time. So he said that he believes the audit will be finalized before then. So those are two dates. So.
The 2020, which audit will be finalized before that?
Oh, the 2021, yes, sorry. The audit to end all audits.
Exactly.
So, so we, we've, we've continuously been asking for it because, like I said, the reconciliation's completed, they agreed. So, and I believe they, they do have the cash. So we'll see, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. That's all.
I don't have any questions. So thank you. Any questions from the public on this? Seeing none, I guess we can move to 12, which is the superintendent's report.
Sure. So I am going to be briefed and I know I say that and people start to pull the pillows out. Right, Kim? Right? But so Mr. Coward and I have been talking, working on transition. We, we know we shared the organizational chart with the committee a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was a little bit longer, but we also have a chart that goes with that with roles and responsibilities. So we've been meeting, looking at the best use of my, of my role to support both Ms. Anzaloni and, and Mr. Coward. So we'll continue to work on that and we'll make sure we share that with the entire community because it's important for people to know who you're going to contact for what. And I know it'll be a little awkward early on, but we'll, we'll definitely work through it and make sure that we communicate with all the stakeholders effectively. So just to keep you aware. And then the other thing I was going to say, so part of the transition is this is my last meeting as school committee, a school committee Freudian slip there, no, as a superintendent. And I don't plan on sitting up here. I feel it's important for me, part of my role to support Mr. Coward is to support him by, I will be here, but I'll be in the audience because I feel like, you know, that's the best way that I can support. People need to look at you and I know they will as a superintendent. So I just want to, hopefully you're okay with that. And I just want to say thank you. I mean, the bottom line is that you know, this has been the most rewarding, most challenging, but the most rewarding opportunity I've had in my 61 years that I remember. Maybe when I was a little infant or something, but I don't remember that. But seriously, I, I just want to thank every individual that I've worked with, obviously the present committee. I truly appreciate it. I feel I've been blessed and while I may complain at times to each one of you. When I watch our meetings and I listen and I see meetings across not only the state, the country, what we've been through and how we've handled that work together and, and like Kelly was saying, we don't, you know, we, we argue all the time, but we present a united front because that's what people need and we've committed to doing that. And I feel the same with us. You know, if I've had disagreements or like I've, I've dealt with it, I hopefully professionally. But I've done it privately and I'm sure I've had conversations with everybody here. But it's, it's been, you know, just a blessing for me and for the previous members, both Mr. Marie and Dr. Dixon too. But I, I just want to end by saying, obviously I'm proud of Mr. Coward and, and I kid around and I take shots all the time, right? And, but I am so proud and I'm so blessed. I've been so blessed. And my life hasn't been easy, but most of those challenges have been self-imposed, right? But, um, you know, every individual I've worked with, every, every community member, every parent, every student, every employee colleague, whether we get along or not, I feel like it's made me a better person. Hopefully a better friend, a better colleague and hopefully a better superintendent. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody because it's truly been me that's benefited from this and and I'll still be here to benefit from it, but I want to thank everybody that I've been in contact with because it's truly just been a lesson, there's been a lesson learned in every interaction because every interaction we have with people is real, right? And, and I do appreciate that. And so I just want to end by saying thank you to everybody. And I appreciate the support and the friendship and the, the faith that people have had in me for these last six years plus. So thank you. That's it.
So I'll go down the line if there are any comments. Mr. Florio?
No comment, Madam Chair. It's better I don't make a comment.
All right. This is, I, I know it's very, it's very emotional. Mrs. Does race kudo?
Well, I have a lot to say. No, just kidding. Thank you. Is all I could say. Thank you.
Mrs. Kalunian?
Craig, I've said it before, I was your biggest fan. I'm really, really happy that you're staying on to transition Don through and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Mrs. Kalunian, Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Levis and Mr. Coward for orchestrating a smooth transition. I think it will, we won't see all the effects, you know, beyond school committee, but I'm sure the, you know, the ripples in the pond are going to infect everyone. So thank you for that. Thank you for all you've done, Mr. Levis, for the community and looking forward to continue working with you. Looking forward to working with Don. Mr. Coward, I'll need your mobile number so I can send you my random texts in the middle of the day. May or may not have any context to them. But no, seriously, thank, thank you for the work you've done to make this a smooth transition.
And I again want to, you know, extend my best wishes. I know you're not leaving yet. So maybe we'll. But I know you're stepping down as superintendent and I think I've already expressed my feelings on, on that, that act and that it was really a selfless thing to do. Not everybody would be able to do that. And so to, to put the community first, to, to put our public schools first is truly appreciated by me. Because I really am a true believer in stability at the top, if at all possible. Because I've seen, I've worked with lots of, I've been on 20 years, so I've seen a lot of superintendents come and go. And we've had some good ones. We've had some, you know, fast moving people that have come and gone. And I've seen, I know enough about what's happened across the state with other communities to know how important the superintendent job is and that that leadership is critical to move achievement forward for our kids. Because that's really what it's all about. Teachers, that's your mission. It's, it's central office's mission. It's our parents' mission. We want our kids to be to achieve, but also emotionally and, and, you know, have that good emotional background and, and, and support. And I feel that you do come to the district with that, that you put kids first. And that was something I really, really appreciated and I always knew with your decisions were based on that. And so that was really something that I really, really appreciated and respected. Because I think that's every leader, every superintendent should have that in the back of their minds that it's, it is a collaborative effort across all of the people who work in this district. But you also have to be, extend your hand to parents, to all the stakeholders. And I, I have to say that as, as a superintendent, you were probably of all the, I don't know how many I've worked with, but over 20 years, you guys probably know. I have seen superintendents not do a very good job with that. And that's one thing Mr. Levis really did do. I can honestly say I don't ever hear any parents are, you know, you came on board and then we had instability. You know, we had people who didn't feel like they were connected to our schools and I think they feel much more connected. I think parents feel more connected and feel like they have a voice and that their issues will be listened to. They might not get the answer they want, but they feel like there's someone listening. And that, I have to say, you've never not taken a call. Parents will call you, your, you know, cell phone is, wasn't blocked on messages. You answered your phones, your, your messages. And so I, and I think I heard that from the community. I heard that from parents. I heard that from people, other political leaders in this town who said, yeah, the sky's a breath of fresh air. So that was one of your really strong suits, being able to reach out and change the culture. You came here saying, that's my biggest priority, changing the culture here in Coventry from one that said, oh, well Coventry's just that way and Coventry never does this and Coventry never does that. And that's just the way it is. To us actually believing that we could make change as a group and as a, as a group of people. And so I really appreciate that and I, I want to thank you for that skill that you brought. And I hope that's a model for future superintendents. And I know Mr. Coward will feel that way as well. You can't be an island superintendent. You have to reach out to all the stakeholders. You have to, even if there are political winds that make you want to scream because, you know, they don't see schools as important as they should be in this community. You really never gave up the, the fight. You always, you never held a grudge. You tried to still work with people even when they said things and you knew they said things about you or whatever. You, you tried your best to keep an open mind and go back and say, I know I can build this bridge. And you built a lot of bridges here and I thank you for that. I thank you for your leadership. You know, I, I really think that people will miss that. I know you're still going to be here. But I do think you made a difference and that's all you can really hope for when you're a superintendent or a teacher. I mean, I think all of our teachers, I mean, I always say teaching is one of the best professions in the sense of what it does for people inside. You know, you can spend your whole life teaching kids, you can spend your whole life as an administrator, whatever, whatever your choice in education is. But at the end of the day, when you finally retire, you know, you've touched all these people's lives, these kids' lives, parents' lives. What's better than that? You know, if you work for, no, if you work for a bank. I didn't mean to bring up citizens. Just came out, slipped out. If you work for a bank, for example, you might help your customers, whatever. But it's not the same impact, you know, when you're teaching kids and helping to the future of our children to succeed in, in any career path that they choose. Or even just to have a smiling face. And how many kids have you mentored, Mr. Levis? You know, kids that were struggling that you took under your wing. That's the kind of thing that, you know, just made an impression on me. And I know that our teachers in our, in our high schools, our middle schools and our elementary schools do the same thing. And so I just thank everyone for that ability to, to make kids, to love their kids. I mean, that's what I always hear from our, our teachers. We love our kids, you know, and parents know that they feel it, the kids feel it. So that's the culture that was here before you came here, but you just made it stronger and you also opened up to the stakeholders. You know, all the people in town. I mean, I don't think I've known anyone that had got a, you know, a, a grant with social services. And so to, to, to reach out and realize that those were important stakeholders, I think is a real gift and it was something this community definitely needed. So I thank you for all your hard work and I know you're still going to work hard and I know I'm so glad you're going to be a mentor and, you know, that I know Mr. Coward will, you know, be making the hard decisions, but he has at least someone he can go to. I've always said the superintendent's job is the loneliest job in the district. Because you can talk to your chair perhaps, maybe if you know that they're not going to blab to anyone. But let's face it, say it to one person, it gets around and then it gets twisted. And I learned that very early on. It's very difficult, even if people don't think, they're just going to say, oh, you know what happened or whatever. And then all of a sudden it blows up into something that never was the truth in the first place. So, and superintendents know that, so they have to, you know, be very, very cautious about who they tell confidential things to. And so often my advice always as a chair is try not to tell, you know, go home and tell your wife or your, your partner or whatever. So, so, you know, I, I really truly believe that it's, that's a gift that, and, and something that's hard as a superintendent, that you're kind of alone on that. And to have, you know, Mr. Levis here with you, I think will be a real plus for you, Mr. Coward. And as well as obvious, most days, except when you want to strangle us. But I, I've said enough, but I, I just want to say that I, I consider you a friend and I, I know that our relationship will continue and that we'll still keep in touch. So. Because I know I'm leaving, but I'm leaving before you. So anyway. So did I already ask if anybody wanted to say anything? I think I did. So I guess we're all good. All right, citizens. Okay. Yeah. Until really it's goodbye. I know, I get that. I just wanted to, you know, I, I I don't blame you and I'll be here when he finally goes to, I'll come to the, the meeting that we know he's leaving and make sure you tell me. Write it down because I won't be living in Coventry. So there's a good chance I might miss it. So I want to be here. So. Well, we just don't know when you'll leave, but I just, I hope someone does in fact, I, I am hoping that you inform me, Mr., or Miss, Miss Cabral, you tell me. Someone tells me so I can be here at that meeting so I can get up as a citizen of Cranston that I can say something. Okay. So are there any citizen comments before we move on? I think we've all talked enough out of it. We never have citizens comments oddly because we talk all during the meeting. So is there a meeting, a motion to schedule the next meeting?
I'm chair, I make motion. Schedule the next meeting for October 13, 2022 at 6:00 P M.
I second the name, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair both side and opposed, the ayes have it. I just want to announce also, Mr. Coward, I will miss your first meeting as, as superintendent because I'll be in Ireland celebrating my 70th birthday.
Nice.
So, yes, but I will definitely be here at the last meeting of the month of October and in turn of our stuff. So is there a, a motion to adjourn? And I have 8:04.
I'm chair, I make a motion to adjourn at 8:04 P M.
Second.
All in favor? I'm motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone for attending.